Go to your Google Drive.
Okay, all right, so let's bring the meeting to order. We're going to forego the pledge of allegiance. Apologies to everyone. First, we want to we want to do a statement on remote participation from the governor's executive order that allows us to suspend the remote participation requirements. That was, I believe, put in place a couple of weeks ago, so we're going to conduct our meeting under those assumptions. Thank you to the governor. So first, we're going to do an approval of the agenda and the minutes. Can I get a motion from the school committee? You all should be the only ones unmuted at this point. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded.
Second, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Actually,
Roll call, Sean.
It's supposed to be a roll call, though.
Okay, roll call. Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil Duzer, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, I got yours.
Yeah.
Vicki Ludwig, aye.
Good. Do you have Dorothy on?
Phil Duzer, aye.
Dorothy's not on, apparently, so we'll move forward with the approval of the minutes of the open budget hearing of March 9, 2020. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the minutes of the open budget hearing of March 9, 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor, roll call, say aye. Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Vicki Ludwig, aye.
Phil Duzer, aye.
All right, now we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everybody. First thing per the agenda, I just want to apprise you where we are as a district with regard to educational considerations in light of this crisis. And keep in mind, last week was a super-long, super-draining week, and it seems like the developments in this are not only happening and changing on a daily basis, but at times it feels like an hourly basis. So in making the decision a week ago Friday, keep in mind that myself and the group of Blackstone Valley superintendents first decided on a two-week closure, and then the following two days later, that Sunday, Governor Baker made the announcement of a three-week closure, bringing us to April 6. So keep in mind, you know, this was super-challenging for all the staff, literally kind of leaving with things in tow. And we came to a decision, both myself and our leadership team, that last week really was all about kind of sharing ASL Day or Alternative Structured Learning Day assignments with focus. And really, just kind of reinforcing practice. But first and foremost, and hopefully my messaging has been very clear about this, has been around connecting with our students. You know, as I've said, that every family is in a different situation. I'm sure that there's plenty of anxiety, plenty of uncertainty in all of our kids' homes, and you know, we fully realize as a district, there is a different situation in every home, as far as parents being around to work with their kids, or possibly somebody taking care of the kids, possibly a grandparent, and so on. So in our initial guidance, we've said that we're shifting, as of today, to give students opportunities to reinforce learning. That we've kind of been explicit that it's not about instruction, but rather, it is about reinforcement of previous learned skills and practice and so on. However, I think we have to be very, very honest about this crisis. I had the opportunity back on Friday to be part of a conference call with our Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, with all the superintendents across the state. And he messaged very, very clearly that there is a super-strong likelihood that this is the closure of all of our schools is going to last well beyond the current three-week period. And I wouldn't be shocked if by the end of this week, the governor has another conference in which this three-week period to April 6 is extended out even further. So I think our thinking right now is we've got a plan to once again shift, and the shift has to be, how do we shift our plans so we're actually delivering instruction and, to the best of our ability, services to all students, particularly those students who need additional supports and are on individualized education plans. So in very, very short term, we've done a lot of work with regard to technology. Hats off to Dave Quinn, our Director of Technology Integration, who's working with staff members in a whole multitude of apps, such as Zoom, Flipgrid, Screencastify, and so on, to be able to support both real-time and asynchronous learning for our students. We've also, I also like speaking of technology, also like to acknowledge Joe Lakey, our Director of Technology Operations, and his staff, along again with Dave, who've done a great job, too, in reaching out to our families, and a lot of them at the elementary level that may not have a device in order to connect with their teachers. So in short order, we've disseminated, at the end of last week, about thirty, thirty-something devices, and we're also looking within the coming week to also disseminate mobile hotspots for families that may not have high-speed internet in their home. So our sense is, we do have the capacity to reach out to all of our families so that we can provide some type of online virtual learning experience for our students. And again, with the full knowledge that this indeed might be the new normal, at least for the 2019-2020 school year, that we've got to prepare. So we're in the process, we're in the early stages right now, in working with our principals, and then also with our staff to think about what is a good system that is a blend of, again, real-time and asynchronous learning for our kids, where our teachers can still remain as support and possibly have a mix of real-time instruction that they're delivering through something just like this, like a Zoom chat, but also asynchronous, delivering content through a whole host of other apps. We're looking for something that's reasonable, isn't overwhelming, and also takes into account the set of circumstances and the flexibility that we need to have for our students, for their families, but also for our teaching staff as well, and our professional staff, realizing that there are many of them are home with their children, and they're also looking to support their kids as well. So it's very, very complex. I think we've got a lot of great people thinking about it, and I have a high degree of confidence that we will be able to put something together. We will also work very closely with our Teachers Association, MURDA, in crafting a memorandum of agreement, an MOA, that makes a lot of sense. So that is an update, and I will continue to keep you and the community updated as that proceeds. Sean, I don't know if you can do this and do a quick screen share, but if you go to the website, mursdextended.com, can you click on that link and then maybe share the screen, Sean? Is that possible?
Yes, I think I can do this.
I have to put you on the spot.
No, absolutely put him on the spot. It's more fun that way.
Okay. I mean, we have seventy participants, all right? Like, this, this, this beats a typical school committee meeting, you know?
Okay, so we're gonna do this.
It's good for a new normal.
Can everybody see my desktop?
Not yet.
I don't, I, I'm looking at Vicki right now.
All right. Hold on, I gotta get the, I gotta get the screen share going. Share screen. Okay.
If not, I can do a description.
Okay, so what would you like to see?
I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Maureen Cohen, our Assistant Superintendent, who literally, in a span of maybe about forty-eight hours, put together this website. If you go to it, it has all of our previous announcements as we've gone through this crisis. It also, if you go to the tab that says "Digital Resources", it also has various websites that are attached to the curriculum at every level, for our elementary students, our middle-school students, and also high school as well. So I know, particularly over this week and next week, you know, as you can see, Lexia, iXL, Raz Kids, and so on, I know our teachers are going to be using these sites very, very heavily. So again, I think it's a great resource for our families. And also, I believe there is also a tab for FAQs. I know in the past, I've sent out a link, a Google link, to a form for different FAQs. I will send that out again in the event that family members have any questions about how we're operating as a district during this crisis. We will constantly update the responses to the FAQs.
And Joe, if you don't mind, I can just jump in. On that FAQ website, right at the top, you'll see, Sean, there's a link in the introduction that has the Google form right there. So, and we will be continuing to just update as we go. But what's interesting, sometimes some of our answers are becoming outdated within the week, so we'll have to go back and keep updating that. But the other part that we haven't added to the website yet, which is the next step this week, is a separate section on just mental health resources for families. And if you click on the COVID info tab at the top, and then click on information, we'll be adding, if you, that's a table context there, if you want to scroll down, but we're putting the updates. You can keep scrolling down, either way works. And you'll see, we have the info on internet access, food service. And so we'll just continue to add different informational updates onto this page as well. And on the digital resources pages, you don't have to click back on it, but the top are the platforms that we use typically, and then the bottom are just additional types of resources that we're adding in, and lots of teachers and staff are helping out with that list as well for different types of resources that people could use.
And tech support.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, I think, is extremely important, and I think we can have a in-depth discussion regarding the financial considerations. And again, I think we're still trying to figure out a lot of pieces with regard to this. And, you know, as I say in my background notes, I have a lot of concerns as far as where we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint, particularly in planning forward the FY 2021 budget. But as far as an update where our district is right now, our district employees are whole, and we've laid forward a set of expectations for, obviously, everybody who's delivering services for our kids. So in this moment, obviously, our professional staff, employees, all have expectations. You know, as we're, we're still kind of, you know, to use the cliche, we're building the plane as we're flying it, but some clear expectations for work and delivery of services from home, specifically our teachers, the professional staff, paraprofessionals, ABA texts, and so on. Our custodians spent last week sanitizing our buildings, and they've done an exemplary job because it's our mindset to keep the buildings mothballed during this closure. And at present time, all of them are on on-call status, and I know our supervisors in each of the four buildings definitely have some distinct responsibilities that they're working on on the on-call basis. Right now, our cafeteria workers are not working, with the exception of a couple people at NIPMUC who are working on the grab-and-go lunches. So I think we're going to have to make a decision about what that looks like and potentially laying them off, but keep in mind that the cafeteria workers are outside of the operational budget. And then I've had some inquiries regarding the bus drivers, realize we do not employ the bus drivers. The bus drivers are employees of Telstone and Son. We were informed late last week that they were laid off and are eligible for unemployment benefits at this present time. Speaking of Telstone, keep in mind that under Massachusetts state law, as our own entity, municipal entity, we by law cannot pay the invoices for contracted services that have not been delivered. So obviously, the bus, busing service being a major contracted service, we would not be following through on payments with regard to busing services. We've also received guidance from the Department of Education that we can continue to pay for out-of-district tuition because, for the simple reason that we're not allowed to prepay those tuitions up to ninety days. And the guidance has actually been to continue paying that because our circuit breaker reimbursement is based upon what we actually paid for tuition. So based upon the guidance that we receive, DESI, it's still a moving target with regard to receiving those services that we actually prepaid for, but their guidance is to continue paying tuition. Jay, I don't know if you want to touch base on any other of the guidance from Jay Sullivan, based upon that conference call last week?
I, thanks, Joe. Hi, everybody. I do think you've summarized it pretty well. They are still sorting out the issue with contracted services, specifically the bus. But until we get guidance or some kind of modification or relief from the state law that says we cannot pay for contracted services that haven't been delivered, we're kind of stuck where we're at. The downside to that is we're not going to get reimbursed for what we don't spend this year, so that will impact the FY 22 budget, not the FY 21 budget, because that's what the reimbursement is based on, is what I fill in for the FY 20 end-of-the-year report. So I guess I would say that one of the things we probably need to think about is any of the money that we don't spend this year on transportation is set aside to offset that reimbursement in FY 22, so that we can protect ourselves, because I think we're going to have some challenges financially. Other than that, the guidance that I think you got, Joe, in your conversation with the commissioner, was we should continue to, they want everybody to get paid that's employees. They want us to try and keep people working and having an income as best we can. And I think they're still sorting it out. I think they're all, this is, you know, we're one week into becoming an online school, and I think they're trying to figure out exactly how to make it work. So I'm sure that things are going to change as things move forward.
Absolutely. And I think that's, if there had to be one theme of everything that we're discussing this evening, I would say that that definitely is the case. Again, just to, I fielded a bunch of questions about, you know, the last time we met, that seems like forever ago, but it was just two weeks ago tonight at the open budget hearing, where you certified the FY 2021 budget request. Keep in mind that it's at the discussion level, both before the Mendon Board of Selectmen and the Upton Board of Selectmen. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, are they meeting Wednesday evening? Kelly McGelro?
She's there.
Sorry, she's probably.
Are you, did you unmute yourself?
Yes. Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have a joint virtual meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
Wow.
Anybody wants to join, if you look at the online posting on the website, it will have, we use, we're using GoToMeeting, so you can, you can watch it that way.
Okay, super. And I know the Mendon Board of Selectmen is voting tomorrow evening as well, and the recommendation would be to delay both the annual town meeting and the town elections till June. I honestly cannot give you a definitive answer of how this will affect and how things will play out in our original certification. But I think the best that we can hope for as this, we get deeper into this, you know, in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and so on, we're going to have a greater sense of all impacts, financial impacts, financial impacts, and also you know, educational impacts as well for our students. And last but not least, and maybe I, I'd like to finish on a silver lining to my report of, I do think this crisis has brought out a lot of really, really good in people. First, I want to give a shout out to the Mendon Neighbor Brigade. All of our stakeholders should have received an email that was sent through the district. Essentially, it's a group of really civic-minded, terrific people who live in Mendon, but they're looking to serve needs in both of our communities, and particularly thinking about people that may be elderly, or may be completely housebound, or had prior health issues prior to this crisis, and what type of help they might need as far as getting meals or any type of support to them. So please look for that email. Speaking of meals, again, I want to give a shout out to Diane Mucci and our cafeteria team that have been putting together the grab-and-go lunches for our district since, a week ago, since last Monday. We really, we wanted to be able to address the needs of our students and families that receive either free or reduced lunch, but we put it out to everybody. I'd like to be able to do it at all four schools, but just because of logistics and where we are, we've made NIPMUC the central point. We started with doing about forty-one lunches on Monday, and we went up to about seventy-one on Friday. So there's definitely a need there, and we will continue to do it as long as we possibly can, unless we go into full lockdown, which I, hopefully, is not going to happen, but that will be a service. We're also conceivably looking to partner with both the Mendon Senior Center and the Upton Council on the Aging. I know there's a need out there, and particularly, again, feeding some of our elderly population, again, potentially the most at risk, potentially the most isolated. So I will report to you in a couple weeks, but we're looking to do something creative there in coming up with some solutions for our community as well.
Hey, Joe, can I just add to that? Janet Dixon, who's the cafeteria director at KLOF, ran a food drive Saturday, and I'm told that they completely stocked the food pantry at the
Awesome.
Center. Several truckloads of food that was taken over there. There's a lot of thanks goes out to all the people that volunteered to put that together and do that.
Super. Thank you. So that is my report.
Okay, so on to new business. Because of the format here, I think we want to do any kind of comments and questions in kind of a two phases. So first, we're going to get the, any questions and comments or discussion from the school committee out of the way first. I can start this off by asking a question. Joe, do we have any, do any plan for, assuming that, that we're going to roll all of this this COVID-19 response back at some point, and not knowing precisely when that date may be, are there some trigger points that we can, can start to latch on to, to tell us when we can start activating certain events, like getting our kids prepared to go back to school again, or or even understanding when any kinds of budget decisions need to be made, and, and we need to accelerate that through the town administration, or anything like that?
That's a great question. I think we're in a place now, and I've had this conversation with a lot of my colleagues across the Blackstone Valley and across the state. When Governor Baker made the decision on March 15 to close the state schools, really, that decision got taken out of the hands of individual communities, individual superintendents, individual school committees. So I think we will get, the longer this crisis goes on, and then hopefully resolves itself, we will be taking our guidance from the state and from the State Department of Public Health on what potential dates coming back are going to be, if they are going to be coming back. I had the opportunity on Saturday morning to do kind of a Zoom Town Hall similar to this and take parents' questions. We had a hundred and seventy-seven participants, which was outstanding. And again, I'll say here what I said to our parents, that the district will pledge to make things right, so to speak. You know, I see a lot of stuff, particularly on social media, about the class of 2020, that, you know, here's a group of kids that are conceivably losing opportunities. Again, this is nothing set yet, but you know, is it a possibility that they would lose events like prom, like graduation, and so on? We'll figure this out. I think there's enough commitment amongst our staff, amongst our parents, amongst the community to figure out how we're going to reschedule, postpone, whatever, some of these key events.
Any other questions from the school committee?
A question and a comment. So first, just a comment, like, I just want to say thank you to you and the entire staff, administration, teachers, and the communication around this has been phenomenal. Like, I've been really touched by the emails from the teachers that have gone out, you know, both to my kids and to me personally. Like, everything's been, like, really on point, so, and I really appreciate it. Question, I think, I know you touched on this on the town hall Saturday, but if you could just repeat the, what's happening with MCAS. I know there are some, like, there were some, they were gonna potentially do a delay if we went back, and then a waiver if we didn't, but then there was some, you know, additional guidance from the federal government on that, so just, it wasn't clear on how that affects at the state level.
Sure. So we initially received guidance Friday morning that Jeff Riley, our commissioner, would be recommending at a minimum a delay of MCAS. So again, even if it was the best-case scenario of us only being out for three weeks, he would look for, he would look to delay it further out in the spring. If the delay goes beyond the three weeks, there would be a strong feeling, and I feel very comfortable speaking for my role. I serve on the Executive Committee of the State Superintendents Association, and I know there's a very strong sentiment that beyond that three weeks, we'd be looking for a moratorium or no MCAS testing this spring. Even if we did return, the emphasis would be, hey, let's, let's not eat up so much time in testing, and let's have our teachers teach. So two things need to happen in Massachusetts for that to happen. One, at the federal level, the Department of Education would have to issue a waiver for the states to apply for, to have a moratorium on testing. And the good news is, on Friday, the US Department of Education did issue that waiver. So in Massachusetts, two things have to happen now. One, DESI has to apply for that waiver. And two, because MCAS is codified into state law, the legislature would actually have to vote to have that moratorium for spring 2020. I think if we see things playing out the way they are, as far as the trajectory and so on, I have a fairly high degree of confidence that that in all likelihood will happen. Speaking of MCAS, a couple of other things. We received word that the April testing for SATs has been postponed till June. You can find out that information from the College Board. And I guess there's also been guidance from the College Board with regard to AP testing that we're looking at a much more streamlined AP test that would be about 45 minutes in length to be taking place at the end of the school year. And it's a test that students, assuming so many of these students across the country are going to be in a virtual learning type situation, that they would take that test in their homes.
So Joe, I have a question about the possibility of owing our special needs students compensatory services, assuming that we're in this for the long term, and we're going to have to shift into more of an instructional mode. So then knowing that our special needs services, students are going to need to make up on the services that they're missing, can you talk a little bit about the budgetary impacts of having to do that for some of our students?
Sure, it's a great question. And I don't know if I have, I can nail down a specific answer for you, Carrie. But I think when you make the shift to saying, we're going to be providing instruction to our students, because they want, we want them to have some type of educational experience, albeit imperfect, for the remainder of the school year. I think for a lot of our students, particularly with mild to moderate disabilities, that receive services along the lines of, you know, small group specialized instruction, reinforcement of skills, executive functioning, a lot of those pieces, I think a lot of those services, quite frankly, you can deliver virtually. And so part of our plan that we're thinking about is, sure, for the majority of our kids that are in an inclusion setting, what is the role of the inclusion special educator? What are the roles of paraprofessionals to ensure that the student is still receiving services? And we're going to do our absolute best. However, I would say, I don't know, maybe 10% to 15% of our students might have some real significant disabilities, and they are doing very, very close work with people like physical therapists. Or they might have the services of an ABA tech that is doing discreet trials with them and tracking behavior and so on. I think those pieces will be much more elusive as far as, you know, is it even possible that you can do some of those things online? I think we will have to develop a plan for compensatory services. Once we return, maybe some of it we can do in the summertime, maybe it'll be additional services that come September and so on. I do think it'll have budgetary impact. I wouldn't say it would have dramatic budgetary impact, because we're probably talking about 10% to 15% of our student population that has IEPs would be receiving these types of services, but it definitely is going to be a factor.
All right, any other questions from the school committee?
I have two quick questions.
Hi, Phil.
I think, Joe, you sent a note about this earlier, but from an out-of-district tuition perspective, for those things like Norfolk-Aggie, for those that are, you know, they're kind of out-of-district tuitions, how will this situation, or do we know when we'll have an answer on how this situation could potentially impact those tuition or fees?
Jay, do you have a sense on that based upon Jay Sullivan's guidance?
Yeah, they referenced that. I've had a couple of phone Zoom sessions just like this with the Department of Ed. They want us to continue to pay places like Norfolk-Aggie vocational schools. Again, they're trying to keep everybody to receive their salaries, and that doesn't happen if they don't have the revenue coming in. So they're telling us to keep paying it for now, and in essence, we're prepaying it. I think the challenge they're trying to figure out, and this is something that goes beyond just what the Department Ed can decide, is do we then never receive those services? Are we prepaying, and we're going to get those services in the fall and not have to pay in the fall? That's not clear yet, and I don't think they're going to have any guidance on that for a few weeks. I don't think we're going to have any answers very quickly.
And I guess with regard to places like Norfolk-Aggie, something got brought to my attention, because we do have some out-of-district placements to the BICO Collaborative, which is in the greater Attleboro area. Realize those schools, specifically, again, I'll single out Norfolk-Aggie, they should be developing a virtual program for all students as well. It's not like just we're doing it. They should be providing services as well to develop their ability.
So that's actually a good question, because I guess the, then the follow-on question to that is, are we responsible for ensuring that those students that are currently going there are actually getting those services and getting those connections?
So Joe, I can, I can chime in on this. Phil, for most of our out-of-district students in special ed, special education programs, the teachers are reaching out to the students just as they are here at MURSD. So they are reaching out, providing resources to the families for the kids to do.
Yeah, and Phil, on Norfolk-Aggie, I can reach out to the business manager there. I think Joe is right. I believe they're probably doing the same kind of things we're doing as a district. I can't tell you, I know that for a fact. You know, I think the goal is to try and keep everybody, using Joe's term, keep everybody whole. Quite honestly, referencing back to the transportation, that's one of my concerns, is some of these companies may not be able to survive this if they're shut down for an extended period of time, you know, a month, month and a half maybe, but if they're shut down extensive, they've got other expenses besides payroll that is not being met by revenue right now. So, you know, this could spiral out of control, I think, quickly if we don't, like, have some resolution in the next month.
I understand that. It would be interesting, I guess, to take a look at our different budget line items to understand kind of what we think could have, you know, where we might have different kinds of impacts from the standpoint of this virtual structure that we're in now, for the time being. And what that might do from a facilities cost, from a grounds cost, from all of those areas and things like that.
I can answer a couple of those. You know, as far as like utilities, electricity, we have put all the buildings on what we call their night and weekend cycle. That's going to produce minimal savings, not dramatic savings. I have instructed that, I don't care how much snow we get, we're not plowing it, because nobody's there, so it'll melt in three days anyway. Some of the transportation, like I said, I think we need to set that aside, because we're going to lose on the reimbursement side down the road, and we need to be able to cover that in some fashion, or we put ourselves into a hole. Obviously, we've stopped buying any supplies, you know, instructional supplies, because we don't need, you know, we need electronic supplies, but we don't need physical supplies anymore. So we've kind of put all of that on hold. I don't think there's going to be any dramatic windfall of money that we're going to be able to pool aside, though.
Well, I don't really expect that. I think it's partially a diversion of costs and structure into other areas, so. That's probably what we'll see, but it'd be interesting to understand kind of how do things migrate over time as we, for how long we might stay into this structure and what's there. So. I guess the last, the last question I have, which is, I don't know, because I, maybe I missed this early on, but what are we doing from an instructional kind of approach for, maybe it's better called a professional development approach, you know, kind of a week-to-week basis as we learn best practices, approaches, what works with different teachers at different levels? Like, how are we getting that information shared amongst the teaching, administration, paraprofessionals, and so forth, that are having to kind of work across this new, I'll use the term landscape that we have?
Sure, great question. I think that the thing that's wonderful is virtually all of our staff members have, you know, had to jump into the world of Zoom, because there's no other choice. And we have a pretty robust district account with Zoom, so everybody can use it as a platform. What's happened is each of our buildings have not only had staff meetings on Zoom, there's been grade level, team level, departmental levels. I know, like, at Nipmuck, there's been, and at Misco, there's department head meetings. So what's happening is at all of these large and small group meetings, what is being discussed are the various apps that teachers can plug into. And then really, our point person is Dave Quinn in providing various online, real-time, and asynchronous PD for the staff. And then you also have other people like Paul Schwab, whose background is as a technology teacher. The two Kadies, Katie Dunton, Katie Jordan, at the elementary level, also pitching in to work with teachers. Sometimes it's just individually, sometimes it is in small groups and so on, to really kind of tailor whatever their needs are. And I think in moving forward, we're going to be looking at what platforms are teachers going to be using, and probably in all likelihood will be Zoom to a large degree, to connect with their kids real time, you know, during the course of the day, but what other platforms are they using to also push content to kids, push instruction to kids in an asynchronous fashion? So it's really going to be about a blend. We're not going to be prescriptive and say, okay, you will use Screencastify, and you, you will use Flipgrid. Because I think there's a lot of teachers out there that already have a lot of creative solutions in what they want to use. And it's really our technology folks, Dave, and our principal's job to do constant check-ins with our staff to see where they are, to make sure they've got the tools that they need to reach our kids and to reach their families.
And Joe, if it's okay if I jump in? We've been developing online PD pages for our staff as well. So every time that we have any of these trainings, we are funneling it to our PD webpage, so they have the tools and resources that they need for ongoing learning, and we're slowly rolling it out each week. Thank you.
No, that's great. I just wanted to say thank you again, because I know, you know, this work in this new environment is probably a very new set of muscles for a lot of people.
It is. And in a lot of ways, and I'm sure, you know, folks, you know, members of the city, but also folks that are in here as participants, it's a different kind of work, and in some ways, it's more work than actually physically being in your usual workspace. You know, that you get punchy after four hours of Zoom meetings in the course of the day, and having to work almost exclusively in electronic space definitely has its challenges, and it's definitely takes some adapting to.
All right, so if there are no further questions from the committee, then we can open this up to community comments. I think, Joe, if you think this is appropriate, then let's do it. But if we use the raise hand feature that's down in your bottom right of your screen, you can raise your hand, I can, and then unmute yourself and ask a question, and we'd be happy to answer it. I don't see any questions.
Is anybody raising their hands?
I don't see any raised hands.
Do people know how to raise their hands?
On the bottom right of the screen is a raise hand button for Zoom.
Okay.
Hey, so Sean, on mine, I have to click on participants, and then they come up on the right side of the screen, and that's where the raise hand feature is.
Ah, okay.
So I don't know, same, I'm on a desktop, I'm not on.
Yeah, so if you put, everybody, if you push the button that says participants, correct me if I'm wrong, it says participant 72?
Correct, that's what I got.
And then a menu will open up on your right-hand side, and then in the middle, you'll see a little gray box that says raise hands.
Here, I'll do it. Do you see my hand, Sean?
Jay, you've raised your hand. Do you have a question?
I know, I just wanted to have you say my name, that's all.
I understand.
You're a very needy guy at times.
Anybody have any questions? Yep, I still don't see any questions, so I guess I can wait a few more seconds. I'm really amazed. Nobody wants to ask any questions.
I think we have, might have a lot of lurkers in this. Come on, raise your hand if you're really a lurker.
We lost three people. They're feeling pressured, Sean.
Oh no, see that? I just blew it.
Flumming.
That's just awful. All right, well, and in any case.
There's a question, if you're looking in the window. I think Caitlin Drew has a, has a raised hand.
Oh, go for it. Where's Caitlin?
She talks.
Oh, sure enough, I see, I see a, I see a Caitlin, go ahead.
Hi, well, I kind of raised my hand, because they were like, raise your hand if you're a lurker. And I'm like, hello.
But you don't have any questions, Caitlin?
Well, I'm a professional at the middle school, so that's kind of how I relate to all this. But I just wanted to let people know, also, I'm on mobile device. So if you are on your cellphone and trying to raise your hand, you go into the participants and then click your own name, and then it comes up with the raise your hand option.
Thank you, Caitlin.
But that's all I got. So thank you for letting me lurk in your meeting.
No problem.
All right, I truly don't see anybody with their hands raised, so. So let's move on then. Next is correspondence. Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? Anyone? No, then we'll move on to the future agenda items. Future updates relative to the closure and the educational activities in April 6th meeting. So we'll probably have updates as to how we've transformed, or the steps we've taken to improve the educational activities, and what future information we have about the closure.
So we, if I could also, I failed to add this, we'll also have an update with regard to the Memorial Elementary School Principal Search. At this time, we do have three finalists, and I also want to recognize again, Maureen Cohen and a terrific team that was put together of parents and staff members and administrators across the district. They did an exemplary job. The overwhelming majority of their interviews, if you can believe this, were done vis a vis Skype, which is not an easy thing to do. But they've done a yeoman's job, and at present time, we have three outstanding finalists for the position. Are you still there, Sean?
No, Sean is frozen now.
Yeah. He's being really, really still and.
Kathleen's here. Kathleen, go wake him up.
Did my words cause him to just fall asleep? He's bored.
Crashed his computer.
All right, Kathleen, you're in charge now. Don't leave. All right, well, somebody else has to take over, Joe.
Who is my vice chair? Lee, are you the vice chair?
I think Dorothy is the vice chair.
How's that working out? How's that working out?
She's here somewhere.
She's here.
Is she here?
She is.
Dorothy's right there.
Oh, where are you, Dorothy?
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, there you are, Dorothy, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing excellent. Do you want to close the meeting? Oh, I see Kathleen also. Kathleen, where's your, I wouldn't say better half.
Okay. He, he said his, he thought the whole meeting crashed, but I told him to come down here, so.
So I got nervous and I reclaim myself as host.
Okay, perfect.
Dorothy, you want to just close out the meeting? Just call for a roll call, a motion and roll call to end the meeting.
You're on mute.
Lower left.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I make a motion for a roll call vote to end the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, so Dorothy Scully, aye?
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
This is just like the Brady Bunch.
Vicki Lebrich, an aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Phil DeZetter, aye.
Do we have everybody? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Round at 7:53.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thanks everyone, I appreciate it.